Hello, everyone. How's it going? I didn't receive emails from some of you.
I'm back live, child. I'm coming on.
Alright, anybody gonna come to our meeting Friday? What's the three, 3pm? It's Rachel.
Oh, I definitely want to come out.
Um, I think Sarah sent it out. I'll have her send it out. It's working. And you'll meet the family in the age of specials. Um, I need people on my panel for the high school career panel, March 28th. It's the SAT day. Okay, I'm gonna send it to you. Okay. Okay, I'll send it.
Come here.
Okay. I will send that to you. Okay. Okay. Okay.
I'm going to call this special meeting of the Stratford Board of Education to order at 7:23. Tonight is March 1st, 2023. Uh, I am Andrea Corcoran, Board Chair. Uh, we do have a quorum this morning and before we get going, I would like to welcome the 10th cohort of Parent C. Uh, for those who are not aware, this is an amazing parent leadership class, um, that of several of us up here on graduation, Ms. Bedell, myself, and Ms. Cupe. Um, and so we applaud, uh, the dedication of all of our new cohort members and we thank you guys for being here tonight and we're so excited to have you, uh, be a part of our educational community and so welcome and enjoy, I hope. And now I will ask Mrs. Wilte to lead us in the invocation and pledge, please. Please stand.
We beseech you, Almighty God, to bless this meeting of the Board of Education, so guide and rule over our hearts and minds that all our deliberations and decisions may be in accordance with your will and lead to the advancement and welfare of the community of Stratford for whom we serve. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Thank you, Mrs. Wilte. And if you would, I would like to take a moment tonight, uh, and have a moment of silence, uh, to remember Mr. Joseph Crudo. Um, he gave a lot to the Stratford community, um, and notably, he served as a board member for years and he was also the coach of the Stratford High School Women's Basketball Team and the Men's Baseball Team for some time. So if you would, a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. We begin tonight with our student representatives' report from Benel High School, Tara Etienne.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tara Etienne and it is a pleasure to be addressing you this evening. We are thrilled to announce that VHS Senior Riley Kukamenez has been selected as the 2023 Connecticut Association of Schools Hearts of the Arts recipient. This award recognizes a student involved in high school perfor- high school performing or visual arts program who exemplify the core values of education-based activities: integrity, citizenship, courage, good character, and who have demonstrated exemplary heart, overcome adversity, and exceeded normal expectations in assisting others within the school community. Riley is an integral member of our school's marching band, concert band, and indoor drumline. She also played a key role in the filming of Disney's Chain Can Dunk last fall. Riley will be recognized as the CAS Arts Awards, at the CAS Arts Awards banquet at the Aqua Turf Club in April. On February 10th, the Men of Color and Living in Color Leadership Groups were visited by CAS and CIAC. CAS and CIAC sat in on a MOC meeting and presented the members with the book entitled Start With Why by Simon Sinek. On February 7th, the MOC was visited by attorney Donald Smart. They had a lively discussion about law and advocacy. MOC was recognized by the NAACP this past weekend. And then LNC held its second annual Valentine's Day fundraising event. They collected money and distributed flowers and candy to students throughout the school. LNC members proudly presented flowers and candy to a number of VHS students, I mean teachers. On February 15th, we had our third annual Black Alumni Panel, whi- which went very well. Throughout the month of February, school counselors at VHS and across the district have been meeting with students individually. Counselors review credits, help students choose classes that are based upon student interest and discuss future career post-secondary options. This is a wonderful chance for counselors to check in with all students on their caseloads. These individual meetings are meaningful for both counselors and students alike. Counselors will soon be meeting with students in the junior class in small groups to discuss post-secondary planning. These sessions will be held in March and April. Additionally, VHS and SHS counselors continue to offer FAFSA support to families. Two sessions were held on February 2nd and February 27th to assist families in completing the FAFSA application. VHS was highlighted in the FAFSA Challenge Newsletter for being a school that has met 80% of their goal. There will be an upcoming recognition day for students who have completed the FAFSA this March. A special celebration will be held raffling off Apple AirPods. Counselors are beginning to prepare for upcoming AP and SAT testing this spring. SAT will be held on March 28th at VHS and the AP testing window will begin in May. The band has recently returned from California where they attended a private screening premiere of Chain Can Dunk in the Walt Disney Theater at the Walt Disney Studios in Burbank. This is the same theater that Snow White and other Disney classics had their first viewing. While in California, the band represented our schools and the town of Stratford as they led the Mickey's Callicade of Friends Parade Down Main Street, USA in the Magic Kingdom. It was an amazing experience highlighted by a visit from the director of the film and all of the leading actors. On March 11th and April 1st, the band will host the annual Indoor Drumline and Indoor Color Guard Championships in the VHS gym. Stop on by to see some of the very best performers from all over Connecticut and New York, including our own amazing Color Guard and Drumline. We are currently in the thick of rehearsals for Mean Girls High School Edition for the Spring Musical. Please come out to the show, May 18th and 19th at 7pm and May 20th at 2pm. We also have a Chipotle fundraiser coming up this weekend at the Stratford Chipotle to help raise funds for the Spring Musical. On Saturday, March 4th, from 4pm to 8pm. Please come support this group. All you need to do is show a digital copy or physical copy for us to get 33% of the proceeds. You can find the flyer on Instagram at Benel Stage and at Benel High School Choir. The cons- the Concert Choir and Select Choir recently sang Lift Every Voice and Sing at the Black Alumni Panel event two weeks ago. Thank you to Mr. Ramos for including us in this impactful event. They have, the Concert Choir and Select Choir have many fundraisers coming up in a support to purchase choir uniforms for starting this spring and for the future. They are selling spring flower buds online. There is a wide variety of colors and breeds of flowers. Please consider ordering these beautiful flowers. The choir receives 50% of the profits and all the flowers shipped directly to you. This is going on now through May 15th. Lastly, the choir is currently planning a trip to Lake Compounds to compete against other choirs in the area. This is a great way for the students to be critiqued, compete, and end the year on a high note. We are looking forward to the concert on May 23rd at 6pm. Please come support the students in the music department. Class of 2024 are selling tickets for their Junior Ring Dance on March 10th. We are accepting canned goods at ticket sales to be donated to the Sterling House Food Pantry. Benel 11th and 12th Grade Mentors went to Flood in Second Hill Lane on Tuesday, February 7th for team-building activities. A select few Flood students will be joining our Black History Panel. Well, they already joined the panel. Interact Club has been busy volunteering with the YMCA at Second Hill Lane and Eli Whitney, Monday through Thursday after school. Students also volunteered at the Second Hill Lane School Dance and PTSA meetings. Women's Empowerment have been busy planning for their alum, uh, Annual Women's Leadership Meet and Greet on March 30th. Our field trip to the Harriet Beecher Stowe Center in Hartford, Connecticut on March 16th, and our Women's History Projects with Flood and Second Hill Lane in the beginning of March. Writing empowering letters to the 6th Grade Girls of Second Hill Lane and also creating small posters of prominent women in history with a short bio to display in the halls of Flood. Steven Calzone, Boy Swim, and Kiara Valero cheerleading were recognized as the February Athletes of the Month. Three students, three student athletes signed their letters of intent last week to play college sports. Colin Bauer, Riviera University Lacrosse, Rohan Torrell, Tufts University Football, and Michael Trovarelli, Central Connecticut State University Football. Samantha Coiman took second place in long jump in the Class L State Meet and will compete in state opens. Students in grades 9 through 12 interviewed for the four March steward positions offered again this year by Audubon CT. For most of these students, this was the first time that they had participated in a job interview. This opportunity helped them experience what they should do prior to a job interview, such as researching the job, thinking about the role in community, and dressing professionally. During the interviews, they learned how to communicate with the interviewers effectively, what the expectations are when collaborating with others, and what employers are looking for. The students representing, the students are representing in our community so well. Creative writing student Samantha Coiman recited her poem Beautiful Brown Eyes during our third annual Black Alumni Panel discussion. Benel English teacher Ms. Allison Miller and Stratford High School teacher Ms. Jessica Teague and Humanity Department Heads from both high schools are rewriting our current UConn ECE curriculum, uh, curriculum to align with UConn's new freshman writing course, Seminar and, and Studio and Academic Writing and Multimodal Composition. We continue to look for opportunities to provide students with access to, access to and preparation for post-secondary education programs. Student Government is hard at work planning several events coming up in the, in the next several weeks. Coming March 7th, we are hosting our second Community Blood Drive of the school year. We hope to repeat our success from November, having over 40 registrators for donations. Finally, our second annual Spring Fling Whole School Dance is taking place at the end of March. Student Government is busy exploring theme ideas, planning, and preparing for the coveted event. Thank you for your time and have a nice rest of your evening.
Thank you, Tara. And from Stratford High School, Tiana Golding.
Good evening. On February 22nd, the Art and Culinary Department collaborated to host Stratford High's first Super Bowl. Students in ceramics classes crafted beautiful bowls and spoons while the soup was made by the talented culinary artists at SHS. The sets were sold for $20 each and all proceeds were donated to the Sterling House Food Pantry. The SHS Department raised approximately $1,000. SHS is happy to report that 53 SHS juniors are signed up for our SAT prep classes. Juniors can choose to attend sessions on Tuesday, Thursday, and/or Saturday. The goal of this program is to provide students individual and targeted instruction and practice as they prepare for the upcoming school day administration of the SAT. Thank you to Dr. Osunde, Dr. Geda, Dr. Daniels, Mrs. Yvonne Temple, and District Coordinators for making this opportunity possible. Our School Counseling Department is nearing the end of scheduling for the 2023, 2024 school year. On Friday, February 24th, Chelsea DeLucia from the Educational Opportunity Center met with students and parents for individual family support on completing their FAFSA. During the month of February, the Black Student Union presented an African-American history segment every morning. My favorite episode discussed the impact and influence of Harriet Tubman on the freedom of enslaved African-American men, women, and children. Additionally, the BSU sponsored Spirit Week. The themes included Wrap Your Heritage, Throwback Thursday, Black Excellence, Dress Your Best, Blackout Friday, and more. Congratulations to the BSU team for their hard work this month. The Humanities Department at Stratford High, Alpha, and Benel have partnered with The Blues and Beyond during the first semester of the Black, African-American, and Puerto Rican Latino Studies Course. During March, they will invite, invite parents and community members to an evening showcase where students will perform lyrical pieces by blues musicians. The African-American journey in the United States over the past several hundred years is documented by and reflected in the evolution of African-American music. And the submissions emphasize how far we have come as a country and analyze what we can do differently. Marching band students from Benel and Stratford High School were invited to the premiere of Chain Can Dunk at Disney Studios in California. This movie was filmed at Benel High School this past year. Students reported having the times, time of their lives and enjoyed their cameos. This week, band, choir, and orchestra students attending the Disney World trip were assigned remains to prepare for their stay. Additionally, the SHS and VHS World Language students attending the Europe trip are finalizing their plans ahead of the trip in April 2023. Stratford High School administrators have enacted a hallway sweep policy to prevent students from lingering in the hallways. I'm happy to report that this system has decreased the amount of students in the hallways during class and increased attendance. On March 11th, the Science Olympiad Team will travel to UConn to compete in their first competition in Connecticut. I'm looking forward to sharing with you in April how this goes. For the sports update, the SHS cheerleading team are in fourth place in SWCs and Kara Brooks was inducted to the All-State Team. They finished sixth out of 13 teams in the state championships. Our girls basketball team qualified for the state tournament and is playing New Milford tonight. The dance team has been dancing their way to the top. They took first place at the NFA Norwich Free Academy Dance Competition and finished third out of 13, out of 17 teams in Fairfield. In addition, they were recognized as the most spirited team and finished fourth in the state hip-hop division. On Saturday, February 11th, Stratford High School hosted the SWC Wrestling Championships. Jake Kizwanos, James DuHansik, and Justin DuHansik all won their weight class in the SWC Championships. SHS finished fourth in that event. Additionally, Jake Kizwanos and James DuHansik both won the Class L All-State Championships and were named Class L All-State. Nate Nagle and Justin DuHansik both finished in third place. The SHS team finished in fifth place in Class L. The State Open Championship, State Open Championships took place on Friday, February 24th and Saturday, February 25th. We are happy to report that Jake Kizwanos finished third in the 195, 95-pound weight class and that James DuHansik won the 220-pound division. And is currently the reigning SWC Class L and State Open Champion. Congratulations. We had three young ladies competing in the State Open Wrestling Championships. SHS captain Lindsay Rival, Cheyenne Rolle, and Adiana McKay. After competing on the boys' team all year, they are now able to compete against other female wrestlers. Lindsay finished in fourth place and Cheyenne came in third place. Congratulations, ladies. SHS senior football star Omar Lee has committed to continue his education and football career at Curry College in Milton, Massachusetts next year. Congratulations to all the winter sports athletes on this amazing season. The SHS Drama Department is ho- hosting their musical Once Upon a Mattress on March 31st and April 1st. We hope to see you there. Additionally, the, additionally, the counseling, SHS Counseling Department held a FAFSA celebration, um, after school today where AirPods were raffled off to seniors who completed their FAFSA. Thank you for the opportunity to inform you on the events occurring at Stratford High and I look forward to speaking to you again in April.
She's being modest, but Tiana is in the cast of Once Upon a Mattress, so we definitely need to make it out so we can see her in that awesome production. Thank you, ladies. I'm going to pass it off to Dr. Osunde for our presentations tonight.
We refer to those things as tall people problems. Uh, good evening, everybody. Good evening. Uh, it's an honor to engage in these presentations. In a few moments, I will ask, uh, the staff members and the school leaders from the Eli Whitney community to come up here, uh, to get recognized. But before I do that, I would like to take a moment to ask everybody to stand and put their hands together for Mrs. Tori Florrick. If you, uh, if you know Tori Florrick, she doesn't like the spotlight on her, but I told her she could not avoid this because, um, you know, I spent two years with her as a colleague and, uh, I had a chance to learn a tremendous amount from her, but she recently retired and she retired after over 40 years of service to the Stratford Public School. So we hope you're enjoying it. I know it's only been a few weeks, but we felt strongly that you deserve this recognition. And for our audience, just to give a quick bio about this tremendous four-plus decades of service to Stratford Public Schools. Ms. Florrick began her career, uh, as a 6th Grade Teacher at Chapel Elementary, alright, in 1976. She served at a series of our elementary schools and ultimately entered administration in 2006. She's been so instrumental to the work of the district and outcomes for students. In 2010, she became the Elementary Curriculum Coordinator. In 2011, she became the Curriculum Coordinator for Math and Science, K-8, adding middle school responsibilities. And ultimately, in 2013, she entered, uh, the Assistant Principal role. And, uh, in 2014, she became the Principal at Eli Whitney and she's been there since. If you have a chance to spend time with Tori, you talk to her about why she does this work, uh, she'll share with you that her sole purpose is to make sure that every child who accesses her building leaves as an independent thinker, okay? She has been a mentor, she has been a friend, she's been an impactful educator, and we wish you nothing but good health, memories, and adventure in retirement. Uh, if you can, I would like for you to come up. We have a few tokens of our appreciation. Please put your hands together. And if I can, I would like, uh, Ms. Cochran to come down for a quick photo op.
I truly appreciate this. Um, Dr. Osunde is absolutely correct. I do hate the spotlight, um, but I do want to acknowledge, um, we have an Eli Whitney contingency here. Um, and Eli Whitney is a school of distinction because it is a learning community where the educators are educators of distinction and we, and we work closely with our students and their families. educators of distinction, and we work closely with our students and their families who are also members of the distinctive group. So thank you for this. Board members, thank you for all you do. So often, people forget that you volunteer to do this, and you do a lot for the students and families at Stratford, and it's good work. I miss being part of the school system, but I have great memories, and I'm very proud to be a resident of Stratford and to have served the Stratford Public Schools for the last forty-six point five years. So thank you.
So Mrs. Florrick actually created a perfect segue. At this time, I'm going to ask interim principal Ralph Ritter to come up, as well as the rest of the professional staff from Eli Whitney, who is in attendance tonight. As you heard Principal Florrick speak, you know, Eli Whitney actually accomplished what is a remarkable feat. Most recently, this professional community, and I always tell people there is some magic that's happening at Eli. I don't know what it is, but we need to find a way to continue to replicate it. But through the pandemic, the professional community at Eli Whitney achieved the most remarkable things that I've seen in all of my career. They achieved and were recognized by the State Department of Education as a school of distinction because of their growth, okay? Because of their growth. Mind you, during the pandemic, okay? Across the country, we had a chance as the board to take a look at a performance data last fall, and that's the foundation for a lot of our improvement efforts. But Eli found a way to position their kids to grow as academics. More than seventy percent of their students are hitting proficient benchmarks. That is remarkable. Please put your hands together. When you further disaggregate the data, our students with high needs are meeting proficiency benchmarks as well. Please put your hands together. So although you did receive the recognition from the State Department of Education, we felt strongly that from the Board of Education, you should receive a recognition from us as well. I know it's a small group here today, but please let everybody else in the professional community know how impressed and how proud we are of the magic that you all are creating at Eli Whitney. Again, put your hands together for the group. Again, another round of applause for just the amazing things at Eli. It's a great honor and pleasure of mine to introduce the next person who will be recognized. In November, the Connecticut Association of Schools announced its two thousand and twenty-three Elementary School Assistant Principal of the Year, okay? And we oftentimes, we talk about the talent that exists here in Stratford, and we talk about ensuring that our neighbors and the rest of the state recognize the talent that does exist here. We need to do a better job of celebrating and promoting the talent that we have here. So the Elementary School Assistant Principal of the Year is an award that honors high-performing assistant principals who have demonstrated extraordinary leadership, a passion for educational excellence, a commitment to their staff and students, service to the communities, and contributions to the overall profession of school administration. For us, that person is no other than Ms. Arlette Johnson. Principal Conrad praises her professionalism, enthusiasm, strong instruction of leadership skills, and deep passion for learning and growth. One parent said, "The children's eyes light up with excitement when they see Ms. Johnson, and they love sharing their day with her because she knows, because they know she cares." So Ms. Johnson, under half of the Stratford Board of Education, congratulations on this recognition and accomplishment, and thank you for representing all of us in the educational landscape of Connecticut, for representing Stratford as a community. And we wish you well. To the best of my knowledge, you advanced at the national level. Yeah? Go get it.
Wow, thank you so much. It's very emotional to be standing here and being recognized by the Board of Education. Twenty years exactly this month. I came to the States by myself with two hundred dollars and a bag full of dreams. I learned English, I learned Spanish, I got into a job that I love. I entered this profession because I love the children and, you know, while we're here, you know, it's bigger than ourselves. I just feel so blessed to join the Stratford community and be part of this beautiful town. And, you know, I fell in love with our children, our community. I want to thank my wonderful principal, Eric Conrad. Thank you so much. You're so kind. You're such a wonderful mentor, and I learn with you every single day. I also want to thank all of my colleagues who are here, the administrators, Dr. Sunday, Dr. Gata, all of you guys for, you know, making a positive impact in the lives of our children. You know, the job never ends, and I'm just so proud to be part of it. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
It's always an honor to tell the good stories of all the amazing things that are happening in Stratford. There's more to come, okay? There's more to come. Thank you.
Let's just call it a night now. It can't get better than that. Congratulations to everybody. It's so amazing. Moving on to our public forum, I believe we still have no public speaker signed up, so maybe next month. And so we will push on to our administrative executive report, and Dr. Sunday, you are once again up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to just take a quick moment to extend my appreciation. I was not able to participate in the January board meeting. I did have a chance to observe it. My wife and I were blessed to welcome our first child. He is a blessing, but if you see bags under my eyes, just play along. It's been a very busy time for us, and as you heard Ms. Florrick share to our board members and our committee members, this is a volunteer role, okay? This is a labor of love for the children of Stratford. This is an advocacy position for the work that we're doing. Over the last month, and really over the last six to eight weeks, this committee, the Finance Committee as well as the Board of Education, has been diving deep into the budget work. I do know that I have carved out time to share my personal appreciation to the Board of Education, but I would like to also extend my appreciation to the members of the Finance Committee, specifically Sue Lance, Ben Proto, and Bob David, for their relentless commitment to ensuring that all the opportunities in Stratford are as maximized to the extent possible. Personally, very proud of this budget. When we entered this process, we set out with a few different objectives, okay? A few different aims as we consider next year. Chief among them was to create a budget that keeps our staff to the extent possible intact. We have a lot of improvement goals, and we've spoken about this very publicly here. It's going to take everybody, being together, working hard together, holding each other accountable in order to accomplish some of the growth things that we're aspiring to accomplish. To do this work, engaged in deep analysis, okay? And to the extent possible, recognizing that oftentimes in most communities, the budget can be an emotionally charged topic, okay? In some spaces, budget feels like a bad word. So this budget itself, we're confident minimizes the opportunities for emotionally charged discussions. And to the extent possible, being fiscally conscious and aware of the burden to the taxpayer, we feel that this budget proposal at three-point-eight-nine or three-point-nine reflects the work and commitment of this administration and this Finance Committee. The other piece now was to make sure that as we continue to work together as a board, it allows us to collaborate deeply and have discussion in a respectful space aimed at the mission and the vision of the district. I think we've accomplished all of those things. So as we move forward with the rest of the night, I again express my personal appreciation to the board and the Finance Committee, Ben, Susan, and Bob, and my personal appreciation to my administration, all of them, and a little extra special thank you to Ms. Pamela Mangini, who is just a savant at this work. Please put your hands together. So again, thank you all for your energy, your time. Thank you for putting Stratford children at the core of what we are discussing and what we're trying to accomplish. And confident that however the dust settles, kids will remain at the center of our conversation. Next, I'm happy to announce that our partners at Sterling House Community Center, who have just been an incredible and valued partner for us here at the Board of Education for a significant amount of time, saw a need in the school system and recognizing the disruption of the pandemic and its impact on learning loss, they applied to the State Department of Education for a grant. Happy to announce that they received a grant award in the amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and forty thousand dollars. If you know Amanda Misen, you know she is the champion for community and bringing the community together. This grant allows us to, allows them to work with the school system and work with our teachers to provide enrichment opportunities to our children, but also for a subgroup of our children, they're able to provide targeted tutoring services to help close learning gaps. When you think about the work we took on last spring with the adoption of a new strategic plan, one of our board priorities was centered on family and community partnerships. I shared with Amanda that this partnership, this grant, is a clear indication of that priority. Last, graduation day, we had our second snow day yesterday, and I know in the conversation I had with Principal Alfiano today, he shared that some kids are starting to have senioritis, okay? Oftentimes, we'd like our students to wait until about May for that to happen, but I suppose February and early March is, you know, new kids today. But we'll continue to monitor the weather over the next couple of weeks, and we are pretty confident that at the March meeting, this board will have a definitive date for graduation. Right now, we're still trending towards June twelfth. And that's it for the executive report.
Thank you, Dr. Sunday. Any questions for Dr. Sunday from the board? Yes, Ms. QB.
Just to follow up, the last meeting you were here, I brought up about, you know, finding ways to incorporate student voice into our work, and I know you said you were going to look into some things. I'm not sure if you've had a chance to get around to that, if there's an update, I'd love to hear.
Absolutely. I do have, I meet, just last week, I meet with, I meet with a selection of kiddos who serve on the Superintendent's Advisory Council. We have a few more meetings to the back end of the year, about two more, and ideally, what I was hoping to do is invite board members, to the extent that it works out with your schedule, to perhaps join that conversation and hear from our students. We have representatives from our secondary schools, both middle schools and both high schools and Alpha. You know, and our kiddos have a tremendous amount of ideas. I spoke about the budget to our kids last week. So I do have those ideas, but I'm also open to other ideas that this board would suggest.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Sunday. We'll move on to Ms. Mangini and her Chief Operating Officer's report.
Great. Thank you very much. One of the more exciting things is the Stratford Public Schools is pleased to announce that we did opt-in to participate in the state of Connecticut's School Meals Assistance Revenue for Transition Program. It's basically the Smart Funds Grant Program two-point-oh. It did begin today in all our schools whereby we are providing free school breakfast and lunch meals to all students, obviously at no cost, and that will be through the end of this school year. We are still encouraging our families to submit free and reduced applications, but I would just like to note that the schools that are continuing under the Community Eligibility Provision Program, that's Franklin, Lordship, Nichols, Second Hill Lane, Johnson, and Soto, obviously continue with free meals, and those schools are not required to submit those free and reduced meal applications per the state guidelines. So it's important to make that distinction. And all of this information is on our website, and also you can get applications for the free and reduced meals on our website as well as in the schools themselves if you need a hard copy. So again, that's very exciting news. And the other thing I just wanted to share is that kindergarten registration did start last week. It's going well. It's been robust. We've had a lot of registrations. There was open house as far as a virtual meeting to help families navigate through the kindergarten program, and we did have our registration secretary there to help them as well. She happens to speak Spanish, which is very helpful to our Spanish-speaking families here in town. But we continue also to get a lot of new registrations, so we're keeping busy in that area. We're closely monitoring the kindergarten registrations to determine what schools are filling up first, but we truly won't have a handle on that until the summer. But that's my report this evening.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Mangini? Seeing that my son was so excited about his free lunch today, I'll tell you that. Those mozzarella-stuffed breadsticks were a hit tonight.
That's great.
Thank you. We'll move on to Dr. Gata and her teaching and learning report.
Thank you. I have to admit that the presentations that were made by the high school students really covered quite a bit. We have to say here tonight, but I do want to recognize a couple of things that were already mentioned, so if that's all right with the board. First of all, I do have to recognize the SUPER, S-O-U-P-E-R Bowl event that took place. It was really, I think, an outstanding success. The collaboration between the Art Department and the Culinary Arts Department here at Stratford High School raised, as was mentioned, over a thousand dollars for the Sterling House Food Pantry. I liked it so much, I came back and got another bowl. So I have two bowls, and they're going to go to some people. Very special. Great idea. Third graders from Johnson House Elementary School have art displayed at the Administration Building, and it will be viewable by their families thanks to their teacher, Michelle Gagnon. And we always enjoy having, you know, one of the nicest things to see is looking out into the hallway and parents and their, you know, with their children showing their artwork that's displayed. So I think there may be plans for displaying some more artwork throughout town, but we'll wait and see how that develops. Also, I think also was mentioned, but I just want to recognize the indoor spectacular drum line and Kellegard event that's happening at Banel High School on March eleventh. So we're all looking forward to that. So we're all looking forward to that. I have seen some board members, I've actually bumped into you, at some very exciting things that are happening, and that's the Invention Convention this year for fourth graders. It's just, you know, one of the things I try to get to every year. And finishing up this year, I think the snow day may have, this week, excuse me, I think the snow day may have interrupted the schedule just a little bit, but students from all schools, all of our elementary schools who are moving forward to their regional conventions in each building will be announced at the end of one of the days this week. It was supposed to be on Tuesday, so we'll see how that works out. The nice thing is, the next step is, you know, the state conference, and we have had students who have participated at the national level as well, so we wish everybody good luck there. Our eighth grade science teachers have been participating in Open Sciad training, started this week. There's one more day to go, again, on the snow day, so we have to see where that winds up. But if you remember, Open Sciad is an open source program that we use here and it's been, we've been working on training teachers in this program now for a couple of years. So the resources is free, the cost is the training, so we're near, we're near the end of the training piece. So a lot of good feedback on that particular program. We also had, and through the work of Ms. Borges and I think Joanna, also Nigerian Garp worked, we had teachers training, twenty teachers training and climate training with Joanne Freiberg and Pat Sacone last week. They spent two days in that session and they will have two more days on restorative practice. The MABE visit, which is the state, it's a national organization, I mentioned that briefly when we were talking the finance committee. MABE is our multicultural organization, visited our dual language program at Second Hill Lane. Ms. Ari says the feedback was terrific and she will also be presenting at the statewide conference on March 11th. She also wanted me to know and wanted you to know that an after-school culture and literacy program began today at Second Hill Lane. I'll be sharing more information about that to you in the future. We are all, well, the Bar Foundation will be coming on April 3rd through 5th. We will be hosting them here and so you'll hear more about that. There's several days involved in that. Board members will be probably involved in that visit as well. And last but not least, we're all looking forward to March 29th, Professional Development Day for our staff. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Any questions for Dr. Gata? Yes, sir.
With the dual language program, can you get us some numbers, the number for the amount of students per grade that are participating in the program? And then I know you had done a presentation about, you know, our students as a whole and our minority students who are for the most part performing above the state benchmarks. But can we get some information on where our dual language students are performing in regards to or equal to our other students, are not dual language students? Just so we can see how, for the most part, see how that program is performing in comparison to our other students?
So I can, I can give a brief, and again, if you recall, we did do an academic achievement, academic performance presentation at the September meeting. And just listening to your question, I think there's perhaps maybe some confusion. Are students of color are actually not performing at the state benchmark? Most of our children, students of color or not students of color?
Above the state benchmark.
Are not, with the exception of the kiddos at Eli. Most of them are not. But if you remember, one of the shining spots at that presentation in September was our children who were second language learners, okay? So in the last links test, our kids are absolutely performing at the highest levels. So when we talk about the assets and strengths that come with that signature program, the dual language program, there is no question that our kiddos in that program, those hundred or hundred and twenty kids are thriving, you know? The next evolution with this work is to make sure our other subgroups experience that level of performance achievement.
Right, so if we could get those benchmarks, we'd just see the comparison?
Absolutely.
We appreciate that. I have another question.
Can I, can I just add to that, though? Our students in Stratford who take the Los Links, which is the language acquisition test, for our multilingual students whose first language is not English, who receive services from the district in the TESL program or the ASOL program. When our students test, that assessment determines whether or not they continue to receive services. You know, they exit the program essentially. Our students perform above, on that assessment, our students perform above the state area. The one area that we feel we need to strengthen a little bit and, you know, isn't exactly what we want is actual, the actual oral presentation part of that, of that program. So that's an area of focus for us, but for the most part, on the Los Links, our students do it very well on that particular assessment.
But that's not just dual language students, right? That's all ESL students across the district?
No, it also involves the multilinguals, the part of the dual language program, which are our students whose first language is not English.
But it's both, it's both groups. It's not just the dual language students, it's ESL students across the district.
I'm sorry, didn't hear the end of it?
It includes, it's all of our English language learners, including the dual language students.
Sorry.
Yes.
Oh, yes. So you had given a presentation too about our transition out of Teachers College. Maybe at the next meeting, if you can give an update on where we are with the state and whether we'll get a waiver or where we are with the process, just so we can keep a brim of that.
We're waiting for that, we're waiting for that information.
That was it, thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Gata? Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Gata. We will move on to our consent agenda. I believe we can take it all as a package. So I will entertain a motion to approve our meeting minutes from January 23rd, 2023, to approve this month's personnel document, and also to approve the proposed field trip of Stratford High School students to the National Jazz Festival in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. So moved by Ms. Q B, second by Mrs. Bedell. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy? Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltzy?
Yes.
Ms. Q B?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, passes seven zero. Thank you. We will now move on to items for action and discussion. We have two proposed budget transfers, both of which have been passed on to us from the finance committee with a favorable recommendation. So I will entertain a motion to approve budget transfer number one, which is to adjust accounts in object 560, per the guidance from the annual state report. RCA should be budgeted and expensed to VOAG and other schools. This line is to account for partial day programs. The total budget transfer is for seventy six thousand, five hundred dollars.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Wiltzy?
Second.
Second by Ms. Q B. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Ms. Q B?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltzy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes seven zero. We'll move on to budget transfer number two. I will entertain a motion to approve budget transfer number two, which is to cover various needs within the clinical cost account line in object 300. The total budget transfer amount is nine hundred and seven thousand dollars, five hundred and, nine hundred, hold on one second, guys. Nine hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and seventy three dollars and ten cents.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Wiltzy, second by Mr. Hendrick. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltzy?
Yes.
Ms. Q B?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes seven zero. I will move on to item number two, proposed policies. These are first read status. So I will, we'll have discussion after the motion, how about that? Sound good? So I'll entertain a motion to approve the first read status of policy number three one six zero, which is our line item transfers policy.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Bedell?
Second.
Second by Ms. Q B. Any discussion? Would one of our policy committee members like to give us a little?
Sure, so this particular policy is basically, you recall in several of our finance meetings before it was brought up because our COO would have to get approval from us to transfer funds within object codes. And so members of the committee had proposed maybe giving her the autonomy to make those sorts of adjustments without our approval. However, making transfers across object codes would still require our approval. So that particular policy covers that. We have some thresholds in there that we would like you to review. It also includes our current practice, which was never formalized into a policy before, even though it's what we've been doing all along, but now we formalize that into this policy. There's also a section for emergency transfer, so if you don't be alarmed by that, state statute requires that we have language about emergency transfer in there. Now, the amount or the threshold, that if you have feedback, definitely share those with us.
Great. Fair, well said, Eric. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
No disrespect to Dr. Sunday, but I don't think he maintains the accounting of the expenditures. I think that's Ms. Mangini who typically does that in the second line item. I know they cross off war, is designee, is that responsibility on solely?
We can absolutely retain that language. I actually proposed striking designee because when I was researching other districts, I didn't see them using that language. And so I thought maybe I would propose sticking with sort of that consistency. But if you feel like we should do that, I'm totally open.
I mean, I'm not, it's not something that I'm not going to, I'm not going to know if the language changes, but just for clarification, again, no disrespect to Dr. Sunday, he doesn't do that, so.
And I'm sure some of the districts, there's people that aren't doing it, but it's just the language that I saw. We can certainly go ahead and keep that.
I'll share this, I certainly do not feel disrespected by nature of the operational management of things. Most of these things will get delegated through any division of our department. Ms. Mangini and I speak on a daily basis and she would not make a move as such without my approval.
I'm not uncomfortable with the language.
Are you proposing we keep it?
The designate would?
Are you proposing we keep?
Just in the second, just in the second line item, I mean, the first sentence, he's responsible for administrative monitoring, but the second question, the superintendent or is designee?
Oh, I see.
Because it's, it's, again.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir?
Just a question for clarification. I noticed on our agenda, it says policy number three one six zero, line item transfers, but on the policy corrections, it says policy three one five zero.
Got a keen eye, my friend. Do we know policy? It's thirty one six, so.
It's thirty one fifty?
I think it's fifty.
I do.
Okay, we'll check in, we'll clarify. My other documents do say for thirty one sixty, but we'll clarify it. There's a series when you follow the NCES guidelines for policies and it's under the three thousand and you do have wiggle room on what number you can call it, so you may see it slightly different in different districts. We'll clarify for the next reading.
Three one five zero?
Okay, so we'll amend the motion, I suppose.
So I was asking for clarification, Mr. Hendrick. On one sheet, it says policy three one five zero, but then on our agenda, it says three one six zero. So just want to make sure we were talking.
It's like a brain puzzle. All right, so.
Dr. Sunday must have done that because Pam doesn't make those numerical.
Listen, I am sleep deprived.
One other question, though?
Yes, sir.
From a legal standpoint, I know we've always said we're allowed to transfer, or the administration, without our approval, to the, allowed to transfer within budget item or within object codes. Is seventy five hundred, is there some legal standing to that number? Is it just a random number?
So prior to us joining the board, passports, many years ago had it at seventy five hundred and then a few boards prior to us changed it to five thousand and then it got changed back, I think still before our time, to seventy five hundred, so that's what it's been right now. We do have the power to change it if we want.
And I guess I would just ask Ms. Mangini, is that, is there some state law, some state statute that dictates a number? Or will, or were you even, even if we give you the authority to do that and you do that, will that put you in a bad position in your accounting or budgeting or legal precedencies?
I appreciate the question because frankly, no, there is no legal statute or legal statute that prevents us from having a higher dollar amount. Most of this language was taken from CAVE anyway. The only thing I will say is we tried to stay around the seventy five hundred, we stayed at the seventy five hundred at the recommendation of our policy committee members, because that is what the town requires. But honestly, we are one line in the town, so, you know, really exceeding that isn't that problematic. But we are staying within the seventy five hundred if we move from object code to object code. Within those object codes, we do have a little more flexibility, which is what I think you wanted us to accomplish, so we don't bring all of those salary adjustments to you.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was illegal, it was, you had the authority, actually, by the administration.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I just want to point out, if you want us to increase that, you know, from object code to object code to let's say maybe ten thousand without our approval, give us that feedback so that when we meet, we can incorporate that into the policy. Any of you?
Okay, thank you very much. Do I need to make a motion to amend the motion to read three one five zero? So I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Bedell?
Second.
Second by Ms. Carol Fabian. And so let's have a roll call vote to approve the amended motion to approve the first rate status of three one five zero. I'll start with Ms. Q B?
Yes.
Ms. Wiltzy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes seven zero. We'll move on. I will entertain a motion to approve the first read status of policy number three five four two.
So moved.
Second.
Great, and Ms. Bedell, would you like to give us an update on this one?
So this is, well, currently we're not charging for our meals, so this would, you know, go into effect next, well, right away, but next year. And again, in line with the CAVE language, it really outlines how our food services are charged, how students can accumulate some charges, excuse me, my head is not all right there right now. And specifically, you know, taking a stance on those outstanding meal charges and racking up charges to stand out. There's some changes in red in the policy and really not much to say.
Sure, I can add, you know, we've been operating under free meals for a few years now due to COVID. And so when our funding ran out at the end of December, we wanted to make sure we had a proper policy in place as we were transitioning. Pam, remind me, I don't think we had any charge policy, food charging policy prior to COVID, right?
We do not, and we are required by the state to have this policy.
Exactly, yeah, so this is something we're implementing that did not exist before. And so please read through, you know, the proposed process of how we would collect, right? So they have different strategies in place, whether it's the guidance counselors, et cetera, our technology that's going to trigger notifications for families when you hit a certain number of meals or threshold. You know, if attempts are being made that are just unsuccessful over a while, then it gets kicked to the principals to try to assist with getting collection. But, you know, it's not something we have to worry about right now because thank God we're at getting free meals until the end of the, yeah.
The definitions of communications to families and so on.
Exactly.
Now, forgive me if I had some missed it, but is there something in here that addresses what happens if a student is habitually delinquent on their account and how do they then obtain food? Is that, is that?
So the state a few years ago, you know, made a policy or law saying you can't just give a child?
Nothing.
You know, a cheese sandwich. You know, a cheese sandwich, right? For lunch, like you, you just can't do that. So we do have to provide a proper meal for them. In the policy, we have, you know, set a threshold of how many we would give them before they have to, you know, like actually pay. It's, they'll still have to pay for it, but we're not going to not feed them, right? So it's a very delicate process. But hey, after you've hit, you know, three meals or five meals, it's kind of like, hey, like the process of collecting on that starts. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Discussion start.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this policy? Seeing none, I'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltzy?
Yes.
Ms. Cuppy?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes seven zero.
Mrs. Cochran, may I bring us back to the previous policy? I knew something wasn't right. We do have a policy three one five zero. And all of my previous drafts that I sent to the policy committee, this policy should be that you just acted on for first reading, should be three one six zero. It was a typo somehow on documents, so you may want to amend your motion. I apologize, I should have caught it more quickly, but I just didn't see that either, and I just looked up on the website. And it's about budget adoption, it's three one five oh.
Oh geez, all right. Robert's rules master over here.
Just better to take care of it now.
So since, since, just guessing at this, but so since we've already, since we've already voted on it, I think the proper way would make a motion to reconsider, and somebody from the prevailing side would make that motion, so I will, and then we can go back and reconsider our vote. So I'd make a motion to reconsider.
So moved.
All right, second.
Any discussion?
So any discussion on the motion to reconsider? And we will be.
And then so once, once we reconsider, then we will, we will amend the original motion and relook. It's a little complicated.
Thank goodness you're here, buddy. All right, so we have a motion to reconsider, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion to amend the, the policy and return it to the original number of three one six zero.
Second.
Second by Ms. Cuppy.
And include in all of the other amendments that were previously approved, besides the three one six zero.
Motion made by Mr. Henrik, seconded by Ms. Cuppy. Any discussion? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote on it. Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltzy?
Yes.
Ms. Cuppy?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes seven zero. Thank you for your expertise, Mr. Henrik. Moving on to number three, we have two proposed solar projects. So I will entertain a motion to approve the solar project for Second Hill Wayne Elementary School, DAS Project ID one three eight zero one zero nine, RRPV.
Motion approved.
Made by Mr. Henrik. Second by Ms. Bedell. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
But I know there was some, and I'm assuming these are initiated by the town, these projects. We had some discussion as to whether these solar panel projects are turning out to be fruitful. I mean, it's in, it's a motion, we're not going to stop it, but has there been any reconsideration from the town as to whether or not we should continue in this vein? Or is it, you know, full steam ahead and let's get it done? I don't know if Mr. Rogero has an answer to that or no.
I will, I'll definitely defer to Mr. Rogero. I will just say that he and I did have a wonderful, thank you very much, we have our friends in the audience here, but Mr. Klee and his associates did provide us with a wonderful overview of the solar projects and the anticipated savings. We are digesting that right now, but the town has definitely taken the lead in those projects. And I know Rich knows which ones we've completed. I don't have my notes with me and which ones are pending, so I'll defer to you on that.
So the two projects that are completed, we spoke about during plant planning, was Johnson and Benel. So right now, actually, we have Sam Zeiggin from CSW Energy, who's been one of the team members from CSW who was running the projects for the town and coordinating everything to be, you know, put in place. Again, as Pam was just saying, we have some numbers that we were given that we can speak about soon, but not tonight.
Tomorrow night?
Possibly. I knew you would say that. And if there are any questions, I'm sure Sam would be, you know, be able to answer anything that anyone had.
I mean, I'm not saying we should stop or slow down, but I was just wondering if we are actually realizing, well, two questions, are we realizing any savings and is the town still fully on board with?
I think we will see a savings. How much that saving is, it also depends on time of the year, the weather and everything else.
Sunlight.
There's a lot more into it than just saying that the numbers that are on the page are accurate because they're just estimates.
And just for your information, we have not seen savings yet, but we don't anticipate that through our overview with the folks from CSW that we wouldn't see them until perhaps April or May's bill. And once we receive those invoices, we're going to have another tutorial so we can make certain that we know where to look and how to calculate that correctly. So we will report back to.
We haven't seen anything on our bills yet for the first two schools.
No problem.
Great, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote. Ms. Cuppy?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltzy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes seven zero. We'll move on to the solar project for Worcester. I will entertain a motion to approve the solar project for Worcester Middle School, DAS Project ID one three eight zero one zero eight, RRPV.
Motion approved.
Moved by Mr. Henrik, seconded by Mrs. Wiltzy. Was that right?
Yes.
You can't see any, sorry. That's great. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
With regard to Worcester, is the work that's happening at Worcester now in preparation for repairing the roof to receive solar panels? And then I guess my second question on that would be, being pretty well versed in solar panel usage, when there's a problem and the user is notified, is it the school system or will it be the town?
So, sorry, can you repeat your first question?
Sure, right now Worcester is covered in construction on their roof.
Okay, yeah, so this, this project is part of a, partially going to be funded by DAS, that's why there's that project number. So the RR at the end is for roof repair, and then the PV is for the solar.
Got it.
So solar is actually phase two of that project.
Perfect.
Yeah.
And the second part of my question, when there's an issue with a panel not operating, throwing the grid off, who will be the point of notification? Will it be the town because it's a town building or will it be Mr. Rogero's office?
I don't know the answer to that offhand.
Okay.
I know the town is going to own the, the solar system, and I think that, that would just have to be worked out.
Okay.
And I'm not sure, generally, there's an operations and maintenance contract for operational solar systems. And, you know, so there would be preventative maintenance and then someone on call, you know, to address issues if they're not generating. So you, and I'm not sure how that's going to be set up, who the contact in the town is, and then who the company is that's going to be performing the operations and maintenance. But, you know, I think that is something that we have been in discussions with and is understood and will be worked out after this is fully installed.
If the board could just be notified when that decision is made, only because I know time is of the essence, and if it's something that the school is responsible, the school system is responsible for, I'd like for us to have that information.
So the town is the lead in this project, but communication absolut, absolutely has to organically happen between the town and Mr. Rogero's office. I know Rich has a very close working relationship with Daniel Wakelin and his team and around big projects, you know, at times I personally communicate with Chris Tembyak. So the communication channels will be open, but the lead on this project is certainly the town.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will have a roll call vote. Ms. Cuppy?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltzy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes seven zero. We'll move on to item number four, proposed curriculum. I will entertain a motion to approve Yukon English one zero zero seven, which is seminar and studio in academic writing and multimodal composition.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Carol Fabian?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cuppy. Any discussion? And can you give us a little update, maybe?
Sure. So this is as Taryn touched on, as Dr. Gata touched on, Yukon has reevaluated one of their courses. And so this will be replacing one of our Yukon ECE English classes for seniors. They have shifted from more of a reading based and writing curriculum to exploring more of the writing aspect and the different, as it says, multimodal composition ways to share their thinking and their writing through various avenues, whether it be like a writing piece, a podcast, digital media, anything like that. So it's making that shift to align us better and keep us in 21st century and Yukon ECE credit.
Wonderful, that's great. Any, I believe so. How many credits?
I believe they get four.
Yeah, oh, all right.
College credits.
Any further discussion?
Maybe, so we just add, you know, it started about like three years ago when they decided they wanted to reevaluate their course. And so it's not finalized, it's not fully transitioned yet. What we're doing is positioning ourselves to be ready for that and have our students be prepared for that. So we're not behind or we're not.
No, we're actually right on track. Yukon had shifted how they're doing it at the university level and have now begun workshops with all the Yukon ECE certified teachers throughout the state. And so they get together and then they get to kind of network within the state with other teachers who teach this course and evaluate how they're going to make the shift. So it's just our, at this point, our teachers are just rewriting the curriculum to better align it with what Yukon is expecting, and they're shifting as they go and as Yukon shares that kind of information with them.
Any questions? Discussion?
Oh, quick, one more, so there won't, will there be, once Yukon settles on their curriculum, will there be further changes that we're expecting to this?
Well, so far, they've done the units that have already been like approved and processed. So this is our units that we can, and then it'll continue to add on to it as it goes.
Okay. Well, thank you. Seeing no further discussion, we will have a roll call vote. Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltzy?
Yes.
Ms. Cuppy?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes seven zero. We will move on to item number five. I will entertain a motion to approve the itemized estimate of expenditures for fiscal year twenty three twenty four as forwarded to the board with a favorable recommendation from the finance committee in the amount of one hundred and twenty seven million, nine hundred and ninety three, four hundred and sixteen dollars, which represents a three point nine percent increase.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Wiltzy?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cuppy. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, that's my turn.
Just a couple, couple of things. During last year's budget process, Dr. Sunday had coined the phrase, reengineering for better efficiencies. I don't, I don't see any of that within our budget. In my, in my construction business, I love tearing things apart, getting it down to the bare studs and then putting it back together creates a much better product. I think last year when we did it, it proved to be very beneficial, and, and I haven't seen any of that, and I think there's a lot of room for that within our budget. So that's one. Secondly, we've talked about the Esser Cliff, and nothing's been done about it since the initial movement of positions from, from the original budget into the grants, and we're now adding new positions, which we as leaders, it's our responsibility, we, some of us have been on the board for three, four years, we can't say somebody else did it. It's our responsibility to address that issue. And I'll keep ringing that bell. I think it is our responsibility, I think we need to take it on. And I don't think adding positions without, without some reengineering that goes behind it, it shows strong leadership qualities on our side. And then just the last point is, we, we were designated Alliance District. What happens now is ECS funding, any, any new monies for the, for the ECS funding circumvents the town and goes directly to the Board of Ed. So although we're only asking for three point nine percent, the bill that we're sending the taxpayer is three point nine percent plus two million dollars. The taxpayer needs to make up that, that circumvented two million dollars. And so, so for those reasons, I can't support that budget. I think there's, I think there's a lot more that can and should be done. I'm strongly in favor of providing a better education for our students. I think we did that last year, even though we worked with a, a smaller number that was given, given to us by the council. And I think we'll be forced to do it again, and I have faith that Dr. Sunday will be able to reengineer and find those efficiencies. But, but I think the way the budget was proposed, I can't, there's too many cliffs, there's too many financial issues that we're creating. This Alliance District on top of the Esser Fund, this Alliance District Cliff we're creating on top of the Esser District Cliff, and the fact that we're not reengineering sends a bad message, in my opinion. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other discuss, well, I'm sorry, would you have wanted a moment to respond, Dr. Sunday?
Sure. I think, you know, again, it's always interesting to listen and digest your take on, on this analysis, and I would actually ask that maybe you cite your understanding of what reengineering means. Because last year, we did a lot of things to make sure that we had a viable operating budget to run an effective academic program for our district. But if, if the memory is not short enough, perhaps it can take us back. Last year, there were some major pain points. So when I stood in front of the board last year, I asked for five point five million or approximately four point six over the year before with no additions. In all due respect and in fairness to our schools, all thirteen of them and our administrators, whenever they have made requests, and I understand that this has been the process prior to my arrival as well, but whenever they've made requests for what I characterize as program enhancements or new initiatives, it has always been shut down. So to be clear, the requests that they make of our new initiatives are always anchored in a self-study about what they need to continue to improve. So you're absolutely right that the Alliance District designation showed up last year, but at the same time, we asked for five point five million, and we were appropriated three million from the town. There was a gap of about two point five million dollars that this board had to respond to. The response were proposals that had an impact on our early childhood education programs, and it became a very polarizing point in our community. So I understand and I recognize the advocacy for the burden of the taxpayer, but if you take a look at this budget, and again, I do want to go back and get a better understanding of what you interpret or what you understand to be reengineering. If you take a look at this budget comparative to last year with an ask that I made to the board for five point five, this year, we came in with an ask of about four point seven, trimming off about seven hundred thousand dollars. Comparatively, historically on average, this, the superintendent's office has always made an ask of roughly about four point six, maybe four point seven percent. If we're talking about reengineering for efficiencies or analyzing and studying the budget in a way that allows for efficiencies, there is no greater explanation than to say that for the first time in probably about six years, maybe even longer, the difference between the average of four point six or four point seven to a three point eight should suggest deeper efficiencies and deeper study, particularly as a response to the burden of the taxpayers as well as the town. From a fiscal and economic standpoint, there's been some great improvements, there's a lot of economic development that's happened across the town. As we continue to look at this work, I'll go back and I'll speak about the fiscal cliff because you're absolutely right. cliff, because you're absolutely right, this is something that all of us, uh, inherited. But again, I'll, I'll share that, this is not atypical compared to other communities, we're all having these conversations. I personally do not feel that there's a way to avoid what will happen next year. What we do have to do is make sure that we have a strong enough infrastructure and foundation to be able to absorb some of the financial conversations we will have in future years. As we continue to talk about efficiencies and re-engineering, if you continue to make a critique about, um, the efficiency of this budget proposal at a three-point-nine, I also want to bring to the attention of this board, but most especially you, Mr. Henrich, that this proposed budget actually has zero reductions, which is something that, to the best of my knowledge, has not been presented, a budget with a historically low ask, uh, and at the same time being the end of keeping the entire professional staff intact. That is not happening, to the best of my knowledge, and again, for my historians out there, please correct me, but in at least a dozen years. So I don't take the nature of this work lightly, I poured a substantial amount of hours, uh, to be in a position to look my staff in the face and say, we have to improve, and it's going to take all of us to do those things. We have to improve, and I recognize that you've asked for resources and support over the last couple of years and you've not received it, but this budget, for the first time in probably about a dozen years, allows us to potentially deliver on that promise or that commitment. A budget that also was responsive to the burden, the tax burden of our taxpayers in our community. But to me, when I look at this budget and I think about the investments, I think we, as a board, the finance committee, and certainly my administration, we've done our part to make sure we address every pain point. So as I look forward to the work that we have that goes all the way up to May, to me, an investment in our schools is a common sense investment in the community of Stratford. So without being too tact, um, I think I have a pretty good response for your questions, and I look forward to the conversation moving forward.
Thank you, Doctor Sunday. Any further discussion, Ms. Cupe? Did I see, oh, or was it Mrs. Wiltie? I'm sorry, Mrs. Wiltie.
Um, Madam Chair, with your permission, may I read a question and answer that you submitted to Pam? Um, for those who do not check the internet, um, for them to be-
I would say that would be honored.
I think that this is a general question that a lot of us have had during our workshops, um, a lot of us have had during the planning for fiscal year twenty-five, and I would just like to read it on the record. On February thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, Ms. Andrea Corcoran submitted the question, can you explain the GWI and how folding Esser-funded salaries back into our general operation budget might impact it? That's something that we're all thinking about now and we're all going to be thinking about next year. The general wage increase and step increases that employees receive contractually each year obviously increases annual salaries. Therefore, the total amount in our budget books reflect the increase the employees in those Esser positions will receive next year. Thus, there is an increase each year to the total cost of these employees. This happens with all grants and is the reason that we sometimes need to shift costs out of the entitlement grants like IDEA and Title One. The increase in grants are not always able to absorb the increase in salaries. With regard to Esser, when Doctor Robinson was urged by town leaders to use Esser funding to offset general operating costs, she was very clear that this could result in an eight-percent increase request for the fiscal year twenty-five budget, as Ms. Mangini, I, was part of that meeting. However, there was really no choice as the budget appropriation was not adequate to cover costs in that year, and we certainly did not want to reduce staff or to increase class sizes during a pandemic. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I was just gonna add that I, I, I do appreciate that there are no reductions in posi- in positions this year, I just don't think it is responsible to add new positions that are new entirely to the district, some of them. Because it takes a year to even get on your feet and learn a job like this. Um, like any, like any education position or any, you know, any, any position you're walking into in, in a new business or corporation or whatever it might be. To think that we would then have to turn around and eliminate those positions the following year because of this cliff that we speak of so very often is, I, I think that's more detrimental to our students and to the town and to our staff than not adding them in the first place.
I think, I think that's a fair position, uh, and I think it comes with good thinking and complex thinking and with some level of forecast to fiscal year twenty-five. With all due respect, I think our schools have been patient enough, uh, with, in respect to the ask that they've made over the last six, maybe even eight years. Um, we have an opportunity this year, okay? Uh, and if you think about this, with the presentation as it is, with this three-point-nine, um, we did do the calculations with these program enhancements, or in the absence of these program enhancements, that number would debatably be roughly three-point-three percent, okay? Which, to Mr. Henrich's point, should suggest to our stakeholders that this budget was deeply well thought out. I think one of the things that is important to really reflect on is this notion that we have an opportunity to, um, respond to the needs of the school year next year in a way that allows us to have productive, um, and quality programs, to respond and create conditions that look similar to what's happening in that Eli. We have twelve other schools that we have to ensure makes progress in that direction. I don't think that making a request for these positions, um, and to your point about the acclamation phase, uh, we, we're quite diligent about making sure we bring in talented people that, you know, we're hopeful that it doesn't take them a year to adapt to, uh, the conditions and the needs of our school. Uh, we expect them to hit the ground running, I will say this very openly and transparently. Uh, we are, I'm involved in a segment of our hiring process, and we look for talent that can hit the ground running, and most notably, our interim assistant principals fit that mode right now. We do have the ability to deliver in a quality year next year. There is absolutely no way we avoid the challenges of the fiscal cliff in twenty-twenty-five, and I think that's a realization that we as a board have to internally make our peace with, and that's a realization that, um, at the town level, they have to make their peace with as well. But when you think about the work that we're doing right now and the progress we're making as a district, you can't pull that carpet up, uh, from under people's feet, okay? We have to keep this locomotive moving in the right direction. The more of a foundation we have next year of success, performance, and accomplishment, the easier it will be to absorb any of the challenges that come with the fiscal year twenty-five budget. So it's a comprehensive analysis that has involved a lot of thought. While I do recognize and I honor your analysis on this, our proposal is to hedge against having a successful year next year and then also reducing the radius blast of fiscal year twenty-five.
Any further discussion, Ms. Cupe?
Sure. So I made a comment in the finance committee, I'll just repeat it here, you know, um, we do a great job here in town, um, servicing our students with exceptionalities. We also do have a responsibility to provide likewise services for our general students. And we should not put ourselves in a position where we're doing less for them. We are the only board, as agents of the state and the town, whose job is to advocate for our learners. That's our responsibility, not to do the council's job, they're tasked with their responsibility, let them do that. We have to stay focused, children at the center of what we do. We've put together a strategic operating plan in order to, um, accomplish what we've established. This budget was put together, uh, you know, to, um, achieve those goals. Why are we going to, um, you know, submit something less than for our children, right? Like, we have an opportunity to, um, like, can we have one year where we actually do the things, right? Like, every year we're coming back and it's, we're underfunded, we're underfunded, and we're looking at cutting programs, cut, we talk about, um, what's that word you used? Kavetch, that's gonna be my new word. We kavetch about families putting their children in private schools or in, you know, neighboring towns, et cetera. If we're not willing to fund the programs here, we can't be mad at them for pulling their children out if we're not meeting their needs. So until we start to do that, we're in no place to really complain, right? That's just my thoughts. Thank you.
I agree that we have an obligation to our students, there's, I think all of us up here agree, we wouldn't be here if we didn't agree that we have an obligation to the students. But we also have an obligation to the staff who are going into next year thinking the worst about their positions because they have no idea what's coming, and neither do we, frankly. So I, I, I think we have a financial responsibility, not to the town, not to the town council, not to anybody else, but to our staff and our school to not create the biggest possible burst that we have seen in, in decades in this district. On an already, not failing, but on an already troubled area. I, I think-
But I think, I don't think any of us, I apologize, I don't think-
Ms. Cupe, she has the floor, you can't interrupt.
It's okay, it's okay.
I don't think any of us holds that we need a plan in place, right, for those positions? Like, that's on all of our minds. So we need to agree, do we want to bring those positions into this budget? Because the needs that these new positions are supposed to fill will still be there. So do we want to propose something higher where we're moving those Esser positions into this budget?
I, I don't think it's proposing something higher. I think like Mr. Henrich mentioned before and Doctor Sunday spoke to, re-engineering and reallocating resources to where they can be used. Um, we discussed a bit about the dual language program, you know, re- reallocating different resources in other places. There's, there's got, gonna have to be a lot more thoughtful thinking about this, not that this wasn't thoughtful thinking or comprehensive thinking, but there needs to be a lot more because not only do we have a responsibility to these students, we have a huge responsibility to the staff that depends on us too.
I don't disagree that we have a responsibility for the staff, like-
Yeah, and I don't-
That was part of why they ended up in Esser, because we didn't want to cut them, right? Like, that was sort of a strategy to retain that staff.
You know, it, it's, it's ironic, and I would certainly not want the message to be lost here. The value we place on our, in our professional community is very evident. You know, I met with all of our administrators today, uh, for our monthly professional community, uh, learning opportunity, we talked about a series of things. I don't want us to misplace the message here, which is, for fiscal year twenty-five, there's a reality that's completely unavoidable, okay? There's a reality that's completely unavoidable. And I'm saying this in the context of, you know, we're talking about a budget this year, and I'm talking about how we've decreased year over year from last year, we've re-engineered and all those different things. The responsibility we have is to take head-on what's gonna happen in twenty-twenty-five. And in order for us to take that head-on in a responsible and efficient and an effective way that minimizes the radius blast, it has to entail engaging in early and consistent conversations between the board and the town. We have to be partners in that work. If this adversarial relationship or dynamic persists, our issue is not a function of what's gonna happen next year or what's gonna happen in fiscal year twenty-five, there will be implications for the next five years. In the context of this, and against what we're looking at, you heard, even prior to, to me getting here, it sounds like Doctor Robinson cautioned and warned that you'd be looking at numbers close to eight percent. With what has been presented and to your suggestion, you're talking about trimming eight percent to seven-point-seven or seven-point-eight percent. It's not that much of a dent at the cost of having a highly productive year with the resources that we stand to put in the hands of our schools. So there is a responsibility, there's no doubt about that, but we can't miss the message that there's a reality that we're all going to have to respond to for fiscal year twenty-five. And I don't know if it should come at the expense of, of this year's budget.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, and, and, you know, I've been saying, uh, this is our second budget, we, we've talked about this, this Esser Cliff, some of the folks on the board have been on for four years, we can't just turn a blind eye to it and say, well, too bad, nothing we can do about it. We're leaders, it's our obligation to do something about it. But for over the last eight years, when we look back, this, this board, the Board of Ed has asked for a number, the council has given us a reduced number, and we've produced a surplus every year. And none of those surplus dollars have ever gone back to help alleviate this cliff. And for members, some of the members on this board, this is their fourth budget, none of them have taken steps to help alleviate that cliff with the surplus. There's ways it could have been done, to just stick your head in the sand and say, there's nothing we can do about it, it, it is, is wrong. And, and I have too much faith in our staff, their hard work, and I think we need to address the issue, and I think we need to do more than sticking our head in the sand and saying, there's nothing we can do about it. There's ways to make this budget better. To say there's not would be a lie. I could not say that to you with a straight face. It would be a lie to say, we couldn't make this budget better, it would be a lie to say, we couldn't start tackling the issue of that Esser grant to ease the burden on our staff and our students when that cliff hits. And now we're making a bigger cliff with the Alliance District, and every year, when we start our budgeting, we go to the budgeted number, not the expended number. So if we, if we started with the expend, if, when we go to the budget number, whatever that surplus was, that's an additional gain to last year's expenditures. We never start with the expended number, we always start with the budgeted number, and for the at, last eight years, we've had a surplus. So if we started from zero, we might be in a different place, but we don't.
So just, just to clarify, better understanding, um, your critique of the board, to use your words, burying their head in the sand, I would actually contend is not, is not accurate. So one of the strategic ways that this board can make the claim that they wanted to be positioned to decrease, uh, costs and be responsive to the fiscal cliff was by establishing the Education Reserve Fund, okay? Um, and at, at their lobby, to their credit, has not been funded. But, you know, it, it's starting to become clear to me, um, because I've heard you cite this and reference this a few times, and, um, perhaps we need to sit down. The year-end balances that the board ultimately ends up with, and we cannot really use the COVID years as a good litmus for this work. But whatever balance ends up in the, in the board's account ultimately goes back to the town. It, it is never seen year over year, required by statutory law to move that to the town. Um, so essence becomes, um, funds that go back to taxpayers, um, based on how town administration chooses to deploy those, those reserves that we send back. So, you know, to unpack your position and your understanding of what happens with those surpluses, um, there's also, um, an analysis that can be applied to this, leveraging, um, how the minimum, uh, budget requirement may result in year-end balances. But I think at this point, based on the way you described it, um, your, your understanding is, is probably misplaced.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Wiltie?
Um, I just had three points for our audience and for people interested in learning a little bit more about some of the things that we're talking about. When Mr. Henrich talks about surpluses, these surpluses came during a pandemic, when our children were remote learning, when our utilities were not being spent, our buildings were closed, um, we had lack of teachers, we had overfilled classrooms when we returned, and all of those dollars, like Doctor Sunday said, went back to the town. We never saw any surplus and it's not in a hidden account. Um, operating expenses are what we budget for, what we need to run our school system, grant funding or programmatic, two very different things, two ways of spending money. And last but certainly not least, a little bit of homework, we need everyone to pay attention to the difference in the definition of supplanting and supplementing, two very, very different words to be used when you're creating a budget to run a school system, supplanting and supplementing. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just point of clarification, the surpluses I'm talking about have been over the last eight years, not the last two.
I would go back, and maybe, may I ask, Ms. Mangini, I hate to put you on the spot, would you always, uh, sum it up in a way that I can understand about our surpluses and budgeting and with your grocery store story? Tell that for us.
Even without the grocery store story, I think it's very important to help the public in particular understand that everything the Board of Education does with regard to its finances is governed by state statute. You are an entity under the State Board of Education, though you do work under the town government. We have gone back, I don't have the information in front of me right now, but we have gone back and provided information on year-end balances for at least the last six or seven year- years. There were a couple of years when we probably had, I don't know from memory, maybe eighty thousand, we had a year when we had absolutely nothing remaining in the last five years. The majority of the year-end balances, of course, as Mrs. Wilson just pointed out, were during COVID. And quite frankly and respectfully to Mr. Henry truly, is that I, I don't know who can feel that budgeting based on actuals from the year prior is the way to set a budget. However, having said that, you certainly review those actuals to establish historical data to determine, should you have an increase in that line item? And there's so many variables and so much work that goes into developing this budget, and honestly, it is irresponsible to budget, to set a budget and bring it to you who cannot statutorily end up in deficit in your budget, and bring it to you with misinformation, perhaps telling you, well, yeah, you don't have to budget for all those C I As, it's fine, we'll find money somewhere. In good conscience, that is not what people who are school business officials would ever recommend. And so for a variety of reasons, I do think that we do a really good job at bringing a budget to you. I think you as board members are so caring about this district, and I mean that sincerely. I've seen it for the past three years, every single one of you, you may approach things differently, but I know at the heart of it, you care about our children and our community, and you're trying to do what's right. I will tell you, as Dr. O'Sunday has said, I think he presented a very strong budget, what's going to happen after it gets through the board, no one knows yet, of course, and we may be making some really tough decisions in the next couple of months, which will be sad, because each time we go forward, and I'll be perfectly blunt, this is the first district I've ever been with where I've had so many personnel reductions, I've never seen anything like this. So I am excited about putting this budget forward, that's a reasonable amount, a reasonable request, and has some really good new initiatives in it. So I, I know that's a little bit wordy, I apologize, but I will provide once again the information on the year-end balances that we have had, I know I've shared it with, it might have been before, some of our newer board members are on, but I will share that again.
Great, thanks, Ms. Mungini. Any other discussion?
You know, just another thing I'd like to point out, if you are looking at the asks that boards of education in our area are asking of their towns, we are the lowest ask in the area, the lowest, with no cuts and adding proposed positions that are targeting all of the areas that we as a board have brought up as concerns, or our staff and our administration have brought up as concerns in areas that they feel they need more assistance, right? One of the main things I've heard over the last year is, we need to bring our scores up, we're now an Alliance District, we need more safety in our schools, we need more discipline, we need more this. All of these targeted positions that are being added are things to help improve those areas, adding tutors, adding deans, adding counselors, adding tutor, like, all of these are to help us get out of Alliance, to help us grow as a district with an ask that's less than anyone.
But if we can't maintain that going forward, then we have a bigger problem.
I absolutely agree with that, and I think that was also the caution that was made a few years back. So, you know, my plug is to exactly your point, Ms. Bedell is, in order to maintain that or to find efficiencies as we enter or approach that fiscal year, we have to have authentic and open communication with the town. There is absolutely no way to avoid it. In fiscal year twenty-five, we will need the town as much as they will need the board, okay? So there has to be that synergistic relationship, and it has to be organic, and it has to be authentic.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will have a roll call vote on the motion on the table, I will start with Ms. Kupi. Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Ms. Bedell?
No.
Mr. Henry?
No.
And the chair votes yes, the motion passes for three. And might I just take a minute to thank our finance committee for all of its hard work, and to thank Dr. Sunday, all of his administrators, Mrs. Mungini, Mrs. Nicholson, and just, I'm gonna leave out a million names, but thank you everybody for all of your hard work, especially over this past month. I know that this is my fourth and final budget for the Board of Education, and, and I feel really hopeful about it, so, thank you all so much. We will move on to tabled items, would anybody like to take anything off of the table? Okay, we shall move on to committee assignments and reports. There is no update on the renaming committee at the moment, curriculum committee, Ms. Carol Fabian, you met February twenty-first.
We did, we met February twenty-first, I'm sorry, we met February twenty-first, we were presented with the overnight field trip where Stratford High School's National Jazz Fest, are attending the National Jazz Festival in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. They will have the opportunity to perform as well as experience other jazz musicians and concerts. We also discussed the proposal to set the first steps in the music curriculum revision for the K through twelve and all of the various opportunities and classes that we offer, whether it's through general, general music, instru- instrumental, chorus, band, exploring music, AP music theory, like, just the whole entire curriculum, K to twelve. And then we also were presented with the UConn Seminar in Studio in Academic Writing and Multimodal Composition E C E that we just approved this evening.
Great, thank you. Any other, Mr. Kennedy, or anything else? Oh, Ms. Kupi? Anything else to add?
Good stuff.
Okay, wonderful. We'll move on to our finance committee, we had a bunch of budget workshops as well as our meeting prior to this. Mrs. Wilson, anything to?
Just that we did spend a lot of time together in February, on the sixth, the eighth, the fifteenth, and the twenty-second. I too want to reiterate the thanks for all the administrators and the time that you invested in this budget and for all of the questions you put up with, all the challenges we gave you, and for all the answers and for all the solutions for where we'd like to see our district move. One noted correction is that our finance committee meeting was held March first, which was before this meeting, not on February twenty-seventh, and our next meeting will be March twenty-seventh at six thirty.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. School plan planning, met February second, two thousand twenty-three, Ms. Kupi, do you have an update for us?
Sure, we had a great discussion as a group, sort of going through our responsibilities and kind of processes here in the district, you know, identifying some of the areas where things that we should be doing were bypassing the committee, and so we've sort of, we talked in great depth about kind of bringing some of those things back to the committee, making sure the committee is allowed to do its work. Tomorrow, we also have a presentation from Durham, it's informational, you're all invited, where they're gonna sort of run us through their roadmap and plan to meet the state's recent law to get to zero emissions within a few years. So that presentation will be through the Plan and Planning Committee, and again, you know, you're all invited, we hope to see you there.
Wonderful, great. Mr. Henry, any other updates?
No, nothing added, Ms. Kupi's been taking the leadership reins over there, running it well.
Super, thanks. Liaison committee did not meet this month, correct? Okay.
No, actually, can I ask a question?
But you may.
Since we did not meet as a liaison committee, we didn't get an opportunity to speak with the town counselors that serve on that. I was wondering though, I know you had, Dr. Sunday, you had emailed the town counselors with the proposed itemized budget and offered to sit down with them or go through it with them, I didn't know if anybody has taken you up on that offer.
None at this time, but we have a few more weeks left before the work, you know, before a decision has to be made. We have some outstanding leaders in the town council, so I'm sure to the extent that people's schedules align, they'll reach out, we'll sit down with them, we'll explain the board's objectives, the board's goals, and provide justifiable rationale for why we're asking, for what we're asking.
Exciting, thank you. Pause your review, Ms. Kupi and Ms. Bedell.
We just presented two policies.
You have done it.
It's one of the first. We're gonna be bringing to you the athletic handbook because they're making some proposed changes to that, so that's, that'll be up next.
Great, yeah, super exciting, great, thanks ladies. And athletic review, Mr. Kennedy, you did not meet, but we're excited to review your handbook. Moving on to other committees, Ms. Kupi, any CAE updates for us?
Advocacy Day is March eighth, so you might see some information come out from CAE, be on the lookout for that. I know they've been going through the governor's proposed budgets and things, some takeaways I've heard is that they're, I don't wanna misspeak, but there's some adjustment in E C S and there might be some reductions in speciality funding or some, so we're still going through, understanding like what all of those, you know, proposed numbers and budgets mean for us all, right? The other thing, it's not necessarily CAE, but I do wanna just point it out because CAE has also been doing a lot of advocating, you know, to accelerate the E C S and not spread it out for the ten years. We also advocated for that, you know, I testified, you know, kind of for us in terms of the free meals policy that went into place, I know pretty much the entire board was in support of that, Dr. Sunday, you were out, sending your support still, you know, we all wrote that letter, and all districts across the state have been advocating, and it just feels nice that we were advocating for our children for this, not like it's our doing, but to be part of the decision, you know, going in our favor is really exciting, so.
Absolutely. Exciting stuff, thank you very much. C E S did not meet last month, I have a meeting tomorrow with them, but I would like to let you guys know that the C E S Foundation will be hosting its April Fool's Day fundraising gala, I believe on April Fool's Day. That would make sense, from six to nine thirty at Blackout Country Club, and the money is raised by the C E S Foundation, go to support C E S educational programs, mini grants, program grants, and all the programs that, you know, help support our district in so many ways as well. So if anybody's interested in attending that, I can get you more information, I'm sure it's gonna be a wonderful evening. Town building needs.
So Ms. Kupi had asked Mr. Allen, who's an actual member of Building Needs, to give us a report at our plan planning meetings to keep us updated. We have asked to get a little more involved in the capital improvement plan, I know there was a note about next month being presented, but just, just that plan and planning to take a little more active role in, in the discussions that lead to the, to the Board of Ed's and the town's capital improvement plan, so.
Super, great, thank you. And any other committees that I'm not aware of? No, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at nine twenty. So moved by Mrs. Wilson, second by Ms. Bedell, all in favor? Thank you very much, all, have a good night.